So I. Turn the light on.
Hey, don't frighten me.
Yeah, that's good. English is good. Okay, I think there are.
I'm calling to get your order. Um, did you hear from? Let's see, I just. Do you hear from anyone? Uh, do you hear from them?
Yes. I'm glad everyone.
Well, we'll proceed. We have a forum, so we'll start. And Dawn may join us, I don't know. Um, so the agenda tonight, we have one application and I also asked Chip to include on the agenda, just a brief discussion on the land use ordinance updates and where everyone is in the drafting process. And I thought we could talk a little bit about schedule on a general like time too.
Dog said he is kind of.
That was Friday? Okay. Now it's Tuesday. Okay. Um, so the Fairgrounds project is. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, this is frozen. Dawn's online. I can see him on here, but it's frozen.
There he is. Hey, everyone. Hey, Don.
So the Fairgrounds project, at the last meeting on the 12th of November, we
It's better.
found the application completely, uh, but
No.
We prior to that, we found the application complete. We held a public hearing on November 12. Um, we had several people who provided comment on the application. And there were several issues that were raised during the hearing discussion. Eric addressed those subsequently in a memo to planning board members and provided some summary and additional thoughts and information about those, those several issues. And tonight, the board is deliberating on the application and potentially making a decision. I think it would be helpful to everyone. I know everyone received Eric's memo and hopefully had an opportunity to read it. But Eric is here and I think it would be helpful if you could summarize for everyone what those issues are and your responses to them. And then if there are questions that anyone has or a discussion, we can go over there.
Sure, thanks Paula. So the, the big question was around pesticide use and the, um, and the RSU. And really the possibility of any kind of interaction between chemicals that might be used in the property and the pollinator garden or just the area in general. I also understand that there's probably a concern about, you know, effects on, on your kids that are using the area, dogs, whatever else. Um, so I did take a look at that fairly, fairly carefully. I wanted to make sure I had a good understanding of what the, the rationale may, may have been for that original condition and, and whether or not I, you know, thought it should continue or if there was an alternative for us. So I did look at state statute and I, I wasn't able to find anything that mandated municipalities to have a protocol or a, um, a, a system like what the RSU does. I think the RSU has a very good system for institution of their size and the, you know, the relationship they have with, 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 with the youth that are there. Um, but it's, it's something that's established by state statute. Uh, the state, uh, Board of Pesticides set the rules that said that schools have to have a program, they have to have an officer in charge of the program, they have to have a tiered hierarchical approach to applying pesticides. And pesticides broadly include herbicides, fungicides, insecticides. Uh, and it, it just pests generally include all those things, biocides. Um, and so there isn't necessarily a specific listing that's available for schools. Uh, but they do have a policy they have to, you know, follow. Um, and a lot of that involves notification, notification of parents, notification of teachers and staff. Um, so I don't think it's quite the best, um, uh, comparison to, to say that that would be an appropriate thing for uh, a municipal entity to follow. However, state law does contemplate, and I think this is a good idea, that the town, um, or any municipality may adopt an ordinance that relates to just town property and the use of herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers, things like that on town properties. Uh, the town of Manchester has one that was adopted several years ago, um, maybe 2017, 2019. Uh, but, um, the, the gist of that is that, um, there are some options there that I think fall through the select board and their role in establishing ordinances. Uh, it's something the planning board could bring in, I think, maybe as, as an addendum perhaps, or as an, a, a adopted by reference perhaps. Uh, if that was a course we wanted to take. But, uh, the ordinance track is one direction and a policy also could be put in place where the select board would establish a policy for uh, herbicide pesticide use, uh, at all town properties. I don't think it would be limited to just the fairgrounds because we have the town forest. Um, and we have a lot of other properties, the beach, uh, and we have had to, in the past, put down repellents for geese. Uh, those type of things are normally excluded, uh, because they're, uh, you know, it's a, it's a dye that helps, um, you know, scare the geese away, but in any event, um, I didn't see much of a precedent, uh, for, um, this kind of pesticide restriction, uh, at least in state law, and I didn't see anything directly related to it in the land use ordinance. I did look, uh, search for herbicides, pesticides. Um, I did search chemical and I found a few references to primarily, um, industrial applications and how you classify those type of uses. Uh, but I didn't see anything about land application of, of pesticides or fertilizers. Um, and I know that there's probably some background there that I might not be aware of, but, um, that's what I found anyway. So I, I believe that with all of that, uh, it would make sense for uh, the town, uh, to pursue a policy or an ordinance with the select board. Uh, and that could come on recommendation of the planning board. Uh, but I don't think that we're in a position now to, to provide a list specifically of herbicides, pesticides, or uh, put forward a policy, um, you know, in a, in conjunction with this application for that parcel. What I can say is that, uh, we've never used any kind of pesticides there. Um, and, uh, we have done some minor fertilizing, uh, once with, with a contracted service provider. And I, you know, don't think it had much impact because the grass still doesn't grow very well. But, um, in any event, um, I don't want to blabber this, but I wanted to keep a thoroughly answered. So that's what I found and I'm happy to take any questions on that. Research or the direction we could take with this.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, was there any discussion with the Fairgrounds Committee or with the Conservation Commission on this issue with respect to the pollinator garden?
No, I, I didn't bring that back to them.
No, I mean, in devising the plan for the fairgrounds and the discussion about pollinator garden, which has been, you know, an issue over the last three or four years. Was that?
Yeah, um, th- there, there wasn't. I think that the intent certainly of the, of the Conservation Commission uh, and of the Fairgrounds Committee is that the, the, the property be, um, treated with a light touch wherever possible. Uh, we, we, you know, worked intentional in trying to design a facility that would have least amount of environmental impacts, least wetland impacts, um, least vegetation being removed. Uh, and I think that would extend to, um, the use of herbicides and pesticides, but it wasn't discussed really at all. Uh, we were looking at a high level. I keep wanting to look at the screen, but, um, a, a high level. Um, and so we, we didn't get into the details of, of that level of maintenance, um, which would be an ongoing thing.
Okay, thanks.
Eric, what do you, what do you think would be the most appropriate way to bring that to the select board and request, you know, some action? A town, townwide, either, you know, whatever they choose to do, a policy or an ordinance.
Yeah, um, I think a recommendation from the, uh, the select floor, uh, from the, uh, planning board to the select board that they consider this, uh, because it is an area that, that might be important for things like orchards or uh, people that grow flowers or, um, a nursery, for example. I know there's one that just went up on Kent Hill. Um, and we do have a lot of, um, you know, areas that, uh, are private, that, that, that the town as a whole, we want to consider talking about herbicides and pesticides, but I think that, um, with this right now, my, my, my recommendation would be that the select board work on policy for municipal properties only. Um, I think that getting beyond that scope is unnecessary at this point. You know, maybe something we can talk about in the future, but right now, uh, I think it really is focused on this, uh, on the fairgrounds, but I'd like to see it broadly applied to town properties, all of them, the beach, um, and, and the town forest and others.
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense to me in that there are other town properties. You know, as you said, that theoretically could be in positions where they were considering applying pesticides or fertilizers and um, rather than have individual approaches to town properties. It makes some sense to me conceptionally, having a single, single approach applied townwide. Um, others?
The, the trouble with that is when you're using any sort of pesticide or herbicide. It's very specialized. So you can't put even the beach with the bedroom. Because you're gonna have totally different issues. That you can't, it'd be hard to have a policy with. And then, then you're gonna have to send one of your town board to install your license. Or repeat when you go back to school, keep updated on all that.
When I, when I think about a, a policy, I don't I'm not, I, I don't know what it would look like, but I'm not necessarily thinking about a list, say, of things you can use and can't use. Because I was thinking about a more generalized approach to how you would choose those things, rather than having a list to put those things on.
Eric, so just to be clear, the town, to your knowledge, has never employed pesticides or herbicides on the fairgrounds property?
To my knowledge, no. Um, I think that there's been talk about, um, tick control, but it's never been more than talk. Um, so, uh, I don't believe there's ever been anything that hasn't been, uh, brought by an individual, you know, um, uh, like a hermaphrodite or something like that that was applied, but, um, no, the town, I mean, I certainly know we've never paid for or purchased any of those chemicals.
Would the the town be willing to consult with the Conservation Commission? Uh, and before applying pesticides or herbicides anywhere near, within a certain distance of the pollinator garden or?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable thing, um.
They do well to talk to university extension.
Cooperative extension, yeah, that's a great suggestion.
They're gonna have more practical, useful laws on that. That's what they do.
Brandon, I ca- I can't hear you, Brandon.
I'm sorry about that.
I know you can be loud, speak up.
Yeah, John, Brandon was suggesting that, um, uh, rather than limited to the Conservation Commission, that that, uh, the town can consult with the Cooperative Extension Service because of their expertise in the area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that makes sense. Let me, let me, uh, if I could just ask a question, um, other than, um, the, the lake, the lake, um, groups that provide us feedback when we're making permit decisions uh, in the shoreline zoning area. Um, do we take in, into consideration any sort of, uh, herbicide or pesticide use on properties that are in those zones? Is there anything in the, in the land use ordinance that talks about that?
Not in the land use ordinance, but there is state rules and regulations of pesticides, especially, uh, you know, the, um, help me out.
Aquatic herbicides?
What's that?
Aquatic herbicide, heavily.
Quiet herb- herbicides, no. I mean, that's, that's ruled when you have the, uh, milfoil, but I was thinking more in terms of the, um,
Phosphorus. Phosphorus. Fertilizers in the shoreline.
The, help me out.
Brown tails?
Brown tails. Yeah, there's some strict rules that can't spray, uh, they can treat the trees, so there, there are, you know, the state, we have to go by that. So by default, we do have some regulations by the laws.
And I guess related to that, with the fairgrounds property, there, there is state law that prohibits, um, spraying of any, um, glyphosate or another type of, uh, chemical within seventy-five feet of a school property. So that does affect, uh, the fairgrounds property. Um, and I mean, glyphosate i- is, um, is a questionable substance, but it's also one of the best things you could ever use to get rid of poison ivy. Um, and I'm, I'm terribly allergic to that stuff and I use it at my house, um, but, uh, carefully in the direction of, of the, um, applicator that, that, um, you know, it comes in, but, um, we do have state law that, that addresses that. I think you're, you have a good point there that, um, there isn't anything more broadly, um, about herbicides or pesticide use, um, in the land use ordinance that, that I think would maybe not supersede, but maybe support state law if, if you had an interest in doing more to protect the lakes. But I don't know if that would be a planning board thing or if it would be again, uh, a townwide policy, um, or ordinance, excuse me.
Well, it, it seems to me that, that, uh, it seems to me that the, you know, the, the bailiwick here for, um, creating, uh, a pesticide, herbicide ordinance is with the, um, select board. Um, I'm just trying to think, and, and I would be in support of, of us trying to, trying to pride the select board into doing that. Um, I just, um, I, I'm trying to think through, you know, what would be, um, a good rationale for us to suggest that to them.
Well, I think the discussion we're having right now is a good, is a good enough basis to say, we, we had an application come in for municipal property. Um, and there was a, uh, an absence of, of direction, um, or at least a, not, not a, not a lot of it anyway, um, on on that issue, and it seems like it's important to, um, or it ought to be important to the residents of the town to know what the policy is for municipal properties anyway. Uh, and I do think, Paula, you got the right idea with, with the hierarchical type approach or, uh, something that says you use the least, uh, intrusive or the least impactful first. And that is very similar to what the school has, without maybe the, the burden of having to have, um, an, an assigned staff person to be responsible for notification and having the notification periods. And we could look at something that might be a public notice, um, but I, I think the idea of sending a mailing to the, to the town or something like that, which would be similar to what the school has to do, I think would be a bit much, but.
And, you know, I, I don't know specifically what the board of pesticide control, um, what they consider to be part of an integrated pest control program and, and how you put such a program together and implement it. To me, that's probably the most appropriate step to start with is the, um, the integrated pest control template, if there is such a thing.
There, there is, yeah, there is. I think that that's a good approach. And so I, I did mention, uh, this issue to the select board at the meeting on Monday because I expected it would be something we'd discuss. And I think it is important for us to have at least some thought or direction on, on this for municipal properties. So they're aware, um, and I let them know that we, we, we may be hearing something from the planning board on this. Didn't, didn't say what, don't, don't know what, but, um, I'm happy to, um, I guess, say that, you know, not necessarily with this project specifically, but broadly, uh, we're happy, unhappy to, to pursue that.
Would it be appropriate for the planning board to send the select board a, a brief memo and say that, you know, we would encourage them to look at this as a result of our conversation around, around this application? And that we did have a discussion about the appropriateness of extending it to municipal properties generally.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Has anybody taken a look at what Manchester's doing?
Dave, man. I just was showing, uh,
What's that?
My, my compod right here. It says Manchester prohibits use of chemical pesticides to alter landscape and outdoor best management activities on town land. So what do you do when you get an invasive species?
Mechanical, I guess. Um, so I guess what I should say about Manchester is that they've looked at the issue. They have a framework for ordinance. I don't necessarily agree with that approach of, of a strict prohibition, but that's, that's a policy discussion.
But they have an ordinance.
They do have an ordinance, yeah. Uh, and we are allowed under state statute to uh, put in an ordinance. It's specifically contemplated, so, um, I like that idea.
Okay, others? Other questions?
I'm I'm not in favor of that.
Um, the town policy?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be too too big. We, we, we're putting in a bazillion dollar ball field that we're not gonna maintain. Because you can't have a ball field if you don't fertilize them. So we're gonna have a sandbag. It's, this has been a snowball. And, uh, yeah, no, it makes me nervous. So, I'm not. I'm not in favor of that. There's a lot of new invasive species coming this way. We're wasting our money now, wouldn't we?
We certainly had, uh, multiple issues and invasives in the town forests that they had to deal with, and I, I I think they mostly used, uh, mechanical means, but also I think that they may have used some kind of organic, um, you know, herbicide, but but no, I, you, I think you're right about the, um, the fact that we don't want to limit, uh, too much.
Yeah, I think it's gonna go too far. It really is. I think it's a nice idea, but it's gonna go too far.
Um, you should talk to Paul at the chair.
Well, then, may I, recommendation?
Would you go to the board?
May I? I have a hot word, I'm sorry.
Um, one more. Um, so have you got anything else to add at this point?
I guess the only other thing I'd add is that I did also look at the, the drainage issue and talked with the engineer briefly about it, but um, a twenty-five year standard i- is the standard that's being used pretty much universally. Um, I think we've met, in, in most cases actually exceeded those, those, uh, criteria. And, uh, if we don't do what we need to do, DEP will not be issuing this permit. So I am a hundred percent confident that we will um, do well, uh, by the, the DEP standards for swamp water. So that's all I had on, on the questions that were, uh, asked at the last meeting.
All right, thanks, sir. Uh, there may be some other questions.
Sure.
But, um,
I'm sorry, yes.
If, if, could you come up?
Just introduce yourself, say where you, where you're from and, uh,
Sure, yeah, I'm Greg, I'm actually from Florida, but, um, Paula, I, I just, what you were saying, it sounded to me like what you were, um, looking for is like some sort of like, uh, just more high level sort of guidance from the select board. And if that, my recommendation would be to like, to maybe just do testing. And then if something were to, uh, you know, for, for known issues in the state, and then if something were to arise as like something concerned, then that could be separately brought up as a, a specific concern, if that's also necessary.
Thank you. Um, on the pesticide issue, planning board members, other thoughts about that? Questions or comments? Um, what direction you should take with that issue?
I, I sort of feel that we're solution in search of a problem. There, they haven't been applying herbicides or pesticides there. I don't think they're gonna be applying a lot of them there. Fertilizer is a different category, uh, I I don't know how often, I, I suspect that at the RSU, they apply a lot of fertilizer on their baseball field. I would, I don't, based on what I've seen of the, of the existing baseball field at the fairgrounds, I'd be surprised if there'd been a lot of fertilizer applied there. And that's not a criticism, by the way.
Yeah, no, I, I can say that I, I'm only aware of one fertilizer application and it was six, seven, eight years ago. So.
I think there might be merit to having some kind of municipal policy, but I don't think it's needed in advance of dealing with this. And I, I, um, and also I do think if there's gonna be a municipal policy, it has to be, as Brandon suggested, would have to be differentiated between different kinds of, uh, parcels. Um, it, it couldn't be a one size fits all, given the distinction between forest land, shoreline and other things, so.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I would agree with, with, uh, what you just said about the, the fact that uh, I don't think we need to take any sort of, uh, actions with respect to uh, pesticide, herbicide ordinance before the fairgrounds situation. It's just that this issue has come up and it seems to me that it might be worth, worth looking at. Not, uh, in, in, in relation to the fairgrounds project, but just going forward at some point. I think we might want to look at, uh, at suggesting to the, uh, select board that they think about this.
I mean, if we, you know, if we did do that, um, you know, my, my thought is that, you know, like I said before, it wouldn't be a list of, of prohibited substances versus those things that you could use. It would be, in my mind, it would be more about the approach to how you choose those, those pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers and, um, and how they're damaged rather than being prescribed about what they are and are not, um, to avoid the situation that, you know, that Brandon was talking about.
Hmm, well, sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I, we're just starting with this. I mean, I don't, I mean, I think at, at some point, somebody needs to look at what the school is doing and what the Manchester's doing, but we don't have to, we don't have to do what they're doing. I, 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 I think, well, you know, it's just something that people need to be thinking about and aware of, and, and maybe we, we do take some steps to start that. But yeah, I, I agree with what you were saying, Paula, about the approach.
Um, others?
Yeah.
Jack?
Um, I do, this is Jack. Um, I do see in the, the application for the fairgrounds project that they talk about mixing fertilizer with their lawn. And the fertilizer shall contain low or no phosphorus content due to the project's position in the Veronica Lake watershed. So I think they do address fertilizer and, and then Peter had a suggestion that before they do pesticides and herbicides, fungicides, insecticides, whatever, that they consult with the Conservation Commission just to see if they have any concerns and work with them.
And when that came up previously, Brandon was suggesting that maybe more appropriate to consult with the Cooperative Extension Service.
Rather, in addition to the Conservation Commission or in lieu of?
I, I think instead of, is that?
Well, you could, you could talk to both. The Conservation Commission couldn't be a straight no or a bad.
Well, consult is what, you know, I, I, consult is one thing, whether they need the prior approval of them is another thing.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just consulting with, so the
The university is, that's, that's, that's what they do.
Chuck?
Yeah, not to beat a dead horse, but this is my background, so I kind of stepped in here. I think that, you know, this is not the job of the planning board, but, you know, I do think that it should be a strong suggestion that the select board do take this up. Think about it, folks. We've got all kinds of tick viruses. It's a new one every summer. And we have a lot of citizens that have been crippled by them. We have new, uh, mosquito viruses coming in every summer. So eventually, there's gonna be spraying. I will guarantee you, there will be spraying, especially seeing what you think about it. This is a field that's to attract people to outdoor activities, young and old. So, um, I'm not professing that there should be spraying, but I think the public's gonna be looking for it. Otherwise, the project might languish, you know, during these seasons when these bugs are prolific. So I think just establishing a policy, if there's a problem, there's a, you know, a form to fill out which would come, go to somebody, select board or whatever, just say we're planning on spraying for this and this night because of this event. I mean, just a policy, you don't have to get specific. But I think it's inevitable that you're gonna have that happening, and I think there should be a policy. But again, it's select board, not planning.
Yeah, and that's what we've been talking about, is something that the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think Chip's right, you know, I mean, uh, things are changing. Climate's changing, so.
Well, I'd be happy to consult with, um, uh, anybody that, that had an interest in this. Uh, I mean, the Conservation Commission is Well, I'd be happy to consult with, um, uh, anybody that, that had an interest in this. Uh, I mean, the Conservation Commission is, is, um I think part of the discussion already and, and, and forever is, is their, in their role. Um, uh, I think that, that, that they do have a bent towards preservation, uh, at times, um, and that's okay. But I think consulting with them is entirely appropriate, uh, and, and they have a role with the Fairgrounds Management Plan that was put in place twenty-five or thirty years ago. Um, that needs to be updated, um, and we certainly could address potentially something in that document, but I, I really do think that, um for the reasons that have been talked about tonight, a broader approach should be looked at, um, but not a prescriptive one.
Um, so it, um, I know, Brandon, you're not in favor of doing this at all, correct? Um.
A real root fault in, in making that, what can we say?
Yeah.
Giving any sort of regulation.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I
It's a, that's a bad one.
Um, what if, um, what if we were to write a brief, um, simple memo to the select board? And um, support the idea of them looking at a broad policy with regard to application of those substances at municipal properties. Um, it could even say that, you know, that we had a discussion about, um specific prohibitions versus a broad policy approach, and that we would favor a broader approach, but, and, and, um suggest to them that, you know, we would support, uh, their look at putting something like that in place. Not, not give them a, you know, a specific recommendation on how to do it, but to plan the seed and let them have a conversation. Um, is there a support for that on the board? Would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, that would.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good to me.
Jack?
Yeah, that's fine.
John?
Yes, yes, it's a good idea.
But as part of this application should, I mean, Eric said it would be good to consult with the Conservation Commission. And just suggest that.
I don't think the Conservation Commission should have a veto.
No, I'm not saying that.
It's literally consulted, but I think we need to
It's consult.
That, people that are experts on it, they're not will make the decision based on their warm budget deals, but on actual bug fat.
I have I have a lot of faith that our municipal leaders to be prudent in the application of any substances on municipal land. We have, in recent memory, had major tire burnings on municipal land. It last happened about thirty-five years ago.
Um, so, uh, uh, Jack, you're talking about, um, a specific requirement in this application to consult with the Conservation Commission and the Cooperative Extension Service, if pesticides are proposed to be applied at some distance from pollinator garden, is that what you said earlier?
I guess it gets confusing. I, I mean, I would just leave it to Eric, to consult with the Conservation Commission about the general issue. With focusing on the pollinator gardens and just, just so there's input.
Right now?
Wouldn't specify how many feed from, I wouldn't specify how many feed from it or anything, just just to consult.
So are you saying something like, uh, prior to the application of herbicides or pesticides, the town will consult with the Conservation Commission and the Cooperative Extension Service?
Yeah, yes.
On selection of?
Just, um, I mean, I was, my concern was the pollinator gardens, cause I think it's sort of inconsistent with pollinator gardens to use all these chemicals, but I, I just want them to have a discussion.
So that would be, that would be prior to the application of any of that stuff.
Yeah.
That consultation would have, not right now.
Right.
And what's your thought on that, Eric?
Uh, I guess I don't really see it as being necessary, but I'm happy to comply. If it moves along. Cause I, I mean, I, I, it, I, I don't believe the conservation, I also don't believe the Conservation Commission would support the use of an herbicide, a second side pesticide that's not organic. And I don't know as I would take that position, you know, speculating, but um, I know the Cooperative Extension does, uh, advocate for the, you know, the safe and, and effective use and the all of those things, environmental stewardship is part of what they do also. Um, but, um, I think that we'd have different perspectives, um, so that, that there might be mixed opinions. Um, and really then again, it just comes back down to the select board or the select board delegating somebody to make those decisions, so as much as I appreciate the sentiment of, of, of bringing people in, I think that we're gonna have inherent disagreement over what that, those applications might look like, if they happen at all. Uh, and so I, like I said, I'm not sure it's a necessary condition, but I'm happy to, to go through the exercise.
Um, I'm not, I don't think I'm hearing broad support or a condition.
Who would make the decision? If we didn't have that initiative, who would decide?
Uh, it would be like me myself. Uh, or the select board, but they would delegate to me and say, hey Eric, be responsible. Don't make anybody sick, don't let anybody get sick, uh. And I'm gonna hire somebody to apply. Yeah.
And educating.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any interest in getting my guys, uh, or girls involved with applying that stuff, yeah.
More or less, sports field or a company like that, already an expert on that.
Yeah, and that's what we did the last time, uh, we hired an expert to, to apply the fertilizer.
That's why we hired him.
Can I ask a question? Um, uh, the last meeting, um, I, I had a very difficult time uh, zooming in to the meeting. Um, my question is, uh, who, who brought up this issue, the pesticide, herbicide fertilizer issue?
I, I brought it up, John, and the reason I did was that there was a planning board approval years ago for the first phase of the fairgrounds project. And that approval included a condition saying that the, uh, the herbicide and pesticide use would be consistent with the policy that the school district has in place. And so I had raised it because that was the previous condition. Uh, not because of any particular issue that I was considering, but just the fact that there had been a condition previously, so.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, it, it seems to me that, that that condition makes sense. Uh, I don't know why we would be backtracking on that.
Well, that, that, um, you know, that was the discussion that we had, and then subsequently, you know, Eric did his research with respect to that, um, you know, the, the school's policy, and looked at Manchester and so forth. And then following his research, he came forward with the recommendation that he made tonight about taking it to the select board to look at a broader policy that would extend to all municipal properties and not just this one.
No, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And that's where we kind of started the conversation.
Yeah, and, and so, so, so then it, it, it circles back around to, okay, so do we wanna put some sort of condition on this, uh, application? Um, I don't know, I I don't know, it just, it seems to me that, um the, the, the condition that was placed on the, on the, uh, fairgrounds earlier um was, did that, I mean, did anybody, does anybody know what, why that was done, or? Um.
No, I don't, I don't remember, because I don't think anybody really remembered the history of it, and specifically why it was, why it was placed on there.
I, I will say, John, that, that, the, the, one of the reasons that I'm not inclined to go that direction or keep that, that condition on there is because the, the program that is established for the schools, established by state statute for schools, uh, and it's, um, it's more than, um uh, I think that we have the capacities as, as the, you know, town staff to, to actually implement effectively. Uh, and it is oriented towards, again, notification of students, notification of, of teachers. Uh, there's a lot of detail in there, I read most of it, um, it's probably twenty pages, I, I think it might be a little less, but it's, um, uh I might be telling them that statute in there as well, but I just don't think it's the right fit to have a school policy that applies to a municipality.
Right, and, 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 uh, uh, in terms of all the notice requirements and everything, uh, that doesn't make sense. But, but you're saying that, um, the earlier condition that was placed on the fairgrounds um, was saying to do exactly the same thing as the school policy required?
I don't remember the, um, I don't have it in front of me, and I don't remember the specific words, but it was something to the effect that, that, um um the policy about application of those substances would be consistent with the policy employed by the school district. And so, you know, I for instance, don't know what that meant in terms of, you know, it couldn't, it wouldn't have made sense to require the types of notifications that the school has to make.
Right.
I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense at all, but you, you, if you're talking about application of materials, I mean, or, 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 um, substances I mean, it, it seems to me, I, I, I just don't wanna see us, you know, backtrack with something like that, although I will say that the ma- the main body for making these kinds of determinations is the select board with respect to either passing or not passing an ordinance. But I, I don't know, uh, I, I'm kind of sympathizing with where Jack's coming from about the fact that, uh, you know, in, in terms of application of substances, it just doesn't seem, seem that, that we want to be, you know, backtracking on.
I guess I, I, I just wanna say that I don't, I don't believe we're backtracking by working on a policy that, that's not in conflict with
No, yeah, and, and
You know what I mean, I just, I, I, I don't believe that not, I don't believe that staying silent on this, which is effectively what you would be doing, uh, is backtracking, I think that the, 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 the approach that I'm recommending is that we, um, or that the select board considers this, um, and that we go from there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm to- totally on board with that.
So if, if the planning board members, um agree and, and support the approach, um I'd be happy to write a brief memo for the planning board to send to the select board. Um suggesting what I outlined earlier. That as a result of our discussion around this application, um, we would support the select board's, uh, consideration of a broader policy that could be uh, applied to all town own properties, and that it be general in nature, and, um, not prescribed and so forth. And I can circulate that, um, for your review, we can, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting if you want to to review the memo, and we can file laws up next time.
Listen.
That sounds great, Paul.
Jack, are you okay with that?
Yes, no, fine.
Don?
Yeah, I'm on board.
Yes.
Alright, um so the three, the three outstanding issues that, um, I had noted from the hearing on the fairgrounds project were this issue. Um, the drainage issue that Eric also addressed in his memo. And, um, third was the matter of the CEO's approval of the, um of the septic system, um, which has happened, uh, that piece has been addressed. And Chip has sent a memo, um, with regard to them. So are there any other issues that planning board members would like to discuss around this application? Is there anything else? Um, anything you wanna add, Eric?
Uh, no, I mean, I appreciate the, um, the review, um, and I, I know there's, it's, it's always difficult to, to work with a municipal application, just because of the nature of, of where it's coming from and where it's going. Uh, your residents as well as, uh, you know, representatives of the town, volunteers, so, um I appreciate the, the work that went into, um, working through this application with the town, so thank you.
And I would add, um, I didn't mention before, but on the, on the drainage issue, uh, as you all recall, Bruce had a number of comments um, about that. Um, I looked at all that material again, um, I reviewed, um, the plan that was submitted as part of the application. Um I considered Bruce's comments, and I came to the conclusion that, um, you know, the the engineering staff had done, uh, what was appropriate in terms of designing the systems of this property, and personally, um, I concluded that I was comfortable with it. I don't know if there are questions, um, from anyone else or concerns about that, but now would be the time to bring them forward if you have them. Now, hearing none, um, I would take a motion, you know, someone would like to make a motion with regarding the fairgrounds application.
I'll move to approve the application. Subject to the standard conditions.
Is there a second? Discussion? Um, discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Um, uh, John, uh, yes, you are, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mention you are a voting member tonight, so Jonathan, hi, John?
Yes.
And Jack?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Eric, very much.
We'll provide updates as things progress, um, I do expect we'll be, um, getting started if, if, if all things come together uh, next year with a partial, uh, build, and then, uh, the, the main work will be coming when we get the, on core onboard in twenty twenty-six, so. That's where we're at.
Okay.
Thanks.
There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you would be missing that. So, um, uh, Brandon provided, um, a draft, uh, that he's been working on, and this is the piece, I assume, Brandon, that talks about the, um uh, this is the manufactured housing law, it's, yeah, okay. And so we have that piece, what I'd like to talk about just for a couple of minutes is that process, the L O update process, and just check in generally with everyone to see how the graphing is going. Uh, Brandon's finished his piece, so that's great, we have that to start with. And, um, I just wanna make sure that everybody else feels like they're, you know, they, they know what their mission is, and, um uh, make sure everyone's on track with that. Um, we had made the assignments, we're missing a couple of members tonight, but we had made the assignments. And if there's any question about those, um uh, Angelica did a good job of listing those in the minutes of October twenty-nine. So the issues and who is assigned to do the book's draft, uh, is listed uh, is listed there if anyone needs to go back and and refer to that. Um, I wanted to talk about a tentative schedule just briefly because we do have some um, some constraints. And we don't have a few, I do have plenty of time, but we don't have a a huge amount of time, so we need to spend that time um, well. Uh, the absolute outside, have everything finished. Uh, final drafts, ready to send to the select board is the beginning of April. And I'd like to uh, to target having all of it finished and sent to them by the end of March if possible. And uh, I had a conversation with Eric about that and he's on board with those uh, with that timeframe, so. Um, what I was thinking as a starting point for our discussion was that I wanted to check to see if it would be possible for everyone to have at least a first draft of of your pieces completed by uh, mid-January, by the fourteenth of January, which is our first meeting day in January. If those could be provided by then, we could then schedule um, possibly a workshop session or including some conversations as part of the regular meeting day also. I'm thinking that we're not going to work through all of this in a single meeting. So my thought was that we might want to talk, if everyone is open to the suggestion, to talk about another separate workshop meeting uh, to talk through uh, at least some of those drafts. And then uh, see what progress we made. And possibly taking up the rest of them um, as a, as an agenda item at uh, perhaps the um, uh, second regular meeting in January. So the dates that that I could see, you know, potentially for workshop dates, which are not on our regular agenda schedule, would be the twenty-first of January possibly. Um, or the fourth of February. Or both, depending on on the progress we make with them. So I wanted to see if uh, people have any idea about their availability on those day. I know it's it's quite a distance ahead at this point, but um, if you could perhaps mark those dates tentatively and try to save them, uh, because we may need one or both for workshop dates. Um, is everyone generally amenable to doing a separate workshop?
We can, we can after.
Yeah.
So Paul, what what are the, it's the twenty-first? The fourteenth and the twenty-first?
Um, the twenty-first of January would be the first one and then uh, February um, fourth, which is an off Tuesday.
Okay.
So possibly, um, if we could, if we could do that, um, the uh, the twenty twenty-first of January as a workshop date. See how much progress we make, um. Depending on what we have on the regular agenda for uh, for agenda items, um, and Chip and I need to talk about that, um.
Yeah.
Um, but I, you know, I I think what we might be able to do, um, say as a you know, part of our regular meeting on the twenty-eighth will depend to a large extent on what winds up in the regular queue of projects on the twenty-eighth, so we're not gonna be able to make a decision until we, until we understand that. Um, so generally, uh, that's what I'm thinking. Um, a couple of separate workshop dates, possibly including some of our discussion at the regular meeting on the twenty-eighth. And um, we do need to hold the hearing. Once we have a, you know, a complete package together that everyone's reviewed individually and collectively as a group and we finalize the drafts. We will need to hold a public hearing and we need roughly two weeks' notice for that hearing, so. Um, that needs to be um, as early in March as possible. Um, we could, you know, I wouldn't, we can get away with, you know, pushing a bit deeper into March, but it definitely has to be in March, so.
Do you know, Angelica, if the twenty-first, if we move it up there?
Um, both the twenty-first and the fourth are available right now. Yeah, we're wide open, so. Good, good timing. Well, maybe you could put us in here tentatively to make sure that remains the case and we'll have some options.
And I'll send out an email just to confirm it after I talk with everybody in the office and make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send an email just to confirm.
Yeah, so generally, uh, is everybody, um, you know, on board with that? Uh, do you think you even have drafts out to every one of your pieces by the June where?
I I'm, the, I sent a memo of an email to Henry about a month ago, uh, with my input as to C I D and Article Nine, um, he and I have to speak, so if I can, I don't know where he is across this.
Yeah. Have to check with him, you know.
I'm not aware that I have, sometimes, if I'm suddenly doing some other drafting, I'm not aware of what it is.
Um, let's see.
There was something in the minutes that I, at the time, the draft, that I said, no, I didn't think I, I was supposed to be doing that, so.
Um. Um, let's see. No, I don't see another one thing that.
No, I didn't recall it.
Yeah.
Now I am available. Late January, early February, um, just to let you know, I mean, I would not be around the latter ten days of February or, and I'll probably unfortunately miss the March meeting if it's the second Tuesday in March, I'll be somewhere else.
Well, uh, I'll I'll check in with uh, with Henry and what we may need to do is, um, you know, choose for our first meeting, the pieces that are that are ready to go and that are ready to have a discussion on. And then if, um, you know, for instance, Henry's piece won't be ready until after the fourteenth, we can schedule that for a second date. But I'll have that conversation, so I'm just being there for others. So everyone else, are you able to get their, your your pieces in by mid-January, do you think? John, Jack and Don?
Oh, yeah, I I um, uh, I got confused because it seems like out of the the meeting that we had, I think it was in October. Um, I thought I had escaped without being responsible for anything, but uh, but then later on, the next meeting, I think you said, hey, John, you you were the one that thought this up, uh, you do this. And and that's the the stuff about the the footprint in the Shoreland Zone and whether you can take a shed and turn it in. Well, uh, uh, so I'm assuming that that's what I'm supposed to do. And uh, yeah, and and I'll look at the, at the minutes from uh, that that um, Angelica put together, but uh, to verify that, but uh, I can certainly get that done by the middle of January.
So John, I'm able to help you out a bit on this one because I actually co- sent an email to Colin Clark at D E P. Um, because I have the the items before that, which, you know, basically what happened was the you know, in our definition, we have floor area versus, or we use footprint versus floor area, anyway.
Yeah.
Um, the state guidelines are are the the opposite of what we have. Um, so I I've reached out to Colin, I have not heard back yet. I did try calling as well, but I I got a message that it takes, it's faster to go by email, so I actually included the the question about accessory structures in, because I figured if I'm gonna touch base with them on one item, we might might as well cover them both.
All right, all right. And I, I, Don, while we talked about this, um, that we had agreed that it would make sense for you and Don to collaborate on this one because there was that overlap.
Okay, sure. Uh, i- is it possible, Don, for you to uh, send me a copy of the email?
Yep.
Yeah, if you would do that, that that'd be great and and you know, I I was just, uh, I think uh, Brandon had an idea about maybe using some kind of ratio, so I was just gonna draft something up that would include that concept too. But yeah, and Don, if you if you'll send me that email and whatever you get back from the fellow at D E P, then uh, yeah, I can and and whatever, i- if you want to, I mean, I can, whatever I'm pulling together, I can send it to you first.
Okay, I'm I'm just trying to find it right now, so you'll get it momentarily.
Oh, okay, no, there's no no rush.
Um, okay, that's probably, um, all we can, um, I want to talk about tonight, um, is the tentative schedule and, uh, Brandon, um, were you able to, you you haven't sent your piece out electronically, right?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm good. I don't want to.
If you want.
Okay.
Does it need to be eligible or just like scan it and send it?
Um, yeah, scan it and send it.
Do you think, yeah, whenever you have it?
Yeah, okay, yeah, and then everybody will have it.
Perfect, I'll think of it in the morning.
If you be there.
Okay, and um, you know, any any feedback immediately is great and then we'll have a, you know, uh, everybody will review the pieces as you get them. And we'll have a group discussion, um, with comments and potential edits when we get to the workshop stage. Okay, um, so I'll consult with Henry and um, I'll see where things are on his end. And then I can send something out to all of you. Um, and also I'll need to talk to Chip about the other items that are queued up for agendas because that will influence how much we can do in these meetings, so. Um, as soon as we figure that stuff out, we'll send something out, see if it's better, we'll put the dates. Anything else, any other comments or suggestions or questions, anyone?
I I have some something important to talk about, but it doesn't have anything to do with uh, with the uh, land use ordinance.
Okay, um, okay, so we're all set with the process and drafting and okay. Um, okay, John?
Uh, I just was curious, I I saw some email about, what is this about us getting paid?
Well, don't get too excited.
I'm gonna get rich, but.
I, you know, to be honest with you, I I'd almost not wanna fool with uh, filling out the paperwork.
Well, it it it, it was, it it's an odd an odd task. Um, I struggled with it because it's 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 hard to figure out what this thing is, how the stipend fits in to the tax structure. But the bottom line is, it's not, it's not all that difficult. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not that hard to do. And the select board had talked, they've been talking actually for the past year, I think, about potentially providing a stipend. The amount of the stipend was was up in the air, um, but um, anyway, they have decided to do it. And you know, it's uh, it's not much, but you know, I'd encourage you to fill the paperwork out, John, there's no reason not to.
This was a select board vote?
Um, I don't know how they approached that. I don't know if it was a vote or if it was included some other way in the budget. I don't know, I don't know the answer.
It might have been part of the budget discussion.
Yeah.
I think.
I was, I was as surprised as anybody to hear about this, um. The paperwork isn't that bad. It's the, although it's odd to doing another W four, especially when you're retired and.
It was very odd.
Yeah, uh.
Little side effect for me, I discovered, well, that I somehow lost my social security card while looking for the uh, documentation I needed.
If you have any questions, John, you can call the office and we can help you with that.
As Angelica's already made.
How much, how much is it? How much are they paying us?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, it's, you know, it's, um.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a year? Two fifty an hour?
Um, and, and it's going to be, as I understand it, in two installments, so it won't even be two fifty, it'll be one twenty-five two times.
Yeah.
One twenty-five two times.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, is it possible for me to just say, oh, this is my donation to the town?
Yeah, some members are doing that.
Okay, maybe I'll do that.
But you've still gotta, you've still gotta fill out the paperwork, receive the check, and then write us a fresh check from you. Gotta do the process.
It doesn't amount to much more, John, than signing your name and providing your address and not, it really.
Okay, uh, Ang- Angelica will help me, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's just scary when it looks, it's not bad.
Okay, the only other thing on the agenda is, uh, within the seven minutes that is not approved, Peter provided some comment.
Yeah.
Some edits on those minutes.
Uh, I would urge people to look carefully at what I tried to say about the sign, the four-year sign. And you could decide whether you agree with that or you wanna say less. I thought we had to say something. Um.
Uh, I don't remember what you said, Peter. Do you have it written?
Oh, it's quite. Yeah, I have, I have.
I've been, I can, I can look to see what was, uh.
What I right now, the Angelica, Angelica's draft says, um, that there was a discussion about that, it mentioned the signs were over the L U O limitations. However, after discussion, and since the sign has already been constructed, it was decided to allow the sign to stay. So I suggested changing that starting with the word however. Well, starting, well, instead of saying over as it exceeds, but then starting with a sentence that however, um, my suggestion was to, um, uh, say um, in what because of the prior approval of the sign by the CEO and the unique characteristics of the subject parcel, which as a practical matter required that the sign be located in the rural residential district, although most of the adjacent land is in the rural district, the board, following a discussion, decided not to require changes to the current sign.
You know, I'm not sure that the L U O requires the sign to be located in the rural residential district.
No, no, it's the characteristics of the property. You couldn't see the sign from the rural district, that's the problem.
Oh, okay, that's the practical matter that you're referring to, okay.
Um, I mean, we could when we heard this discussion last time, as a, as a lawyer, my lawyer had said, you know, they would have a great, Ford, you, Mr. Ford, you would have a good case for uh, what's called equitable stoppable. Um, because the sign's been approved by the CEO. But I don't wanna go there and and talk about legal stuff uh, in these minutes. She said, you know, we don't wanna disturb what's already been approved by the CEO and also correctly the sign, it just has to be where it is, as be seen. And by saying, so we're not recommending, we're not requiring any changes to the current sign. If Mr. Ford were to come back later and fool with it and do something with that sign differently, we would have to review this again, of course.
Yeah. And I actually put something in the nevisum decision about that, that if it's, you know, the sign is is, you know, modified or removed in the future, then a new sign would be subject to all of the relevant requirements of the sign. The only thing I would suggest about the language is that rather than where you say replacing, we're over with exceeds. I think I would suggest saying that that the sign was not in conformance with the standards in the L U O because it wasn't just a size issue. There was another provision that we talked about as well that didn't relate to size, it was more about the nature of the sign. So if if we could modify it in that way and say
Rather than the dimensions of the sign specifically, just that it wasn't.
Say that it wasn't. Let's see.
Maybe cross out dimensions of the sign and replace it with that the sign was not in conformance with the standards of the L U O.
Discussion that the dimensions of the sign were over the L U O limitations. That the sign discussion that the sign was not in full conformance with the standards of the L U O.
Perfect. And then I can pretty much get rid of the part about the exceeding the limitations.
Yeah, and that that would substitute for exceeds and so forth, and then, you know, then there's all this language that Peter suggested.
Okay.
Any other edits, comments on the draft minutes? If not, I take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
As amended?
As amended.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended, is there a second?
Oh, certainly.
Motion, second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
John is an aye, Don?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. That's all I know, anything else, anyone? Great, thanks.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Return.
Have a great holiday.